Call the meeting to order. We are mostly all here. I haven't heard from Josh. I assume he'll be coming soon. Are we?
I'm just going by this.
Yeah.
It's nearly savings time, or is it?
Okay, would we all please stand and if so, then fly, face the flag, take off your hip leathers, and recite the pledge allegiance with us.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have one agenda amendment, and it's the ratifying our superintendent contract. We'll put that under item 11, considering the other contracts we have and the other discussions we have. So please add superintendent contract, item 11. No other amendments? I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
I'm going to make the motion.
Kurt? And Rob with the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Schedule presenters. Spanish Club Trip, only 17. Lynn, would you join us?
I'm Lynn Mercer, the Spanish teacher, just in case any of you don't know who I am. And I think I've got a summary of some of the details of our trip by each one of your chairs. I just want to remind you, though, this is not a new thing. The Spanish trip has been going every other year since I've been teaching here. So I'm not presenting anything new, just giving you details about the trip that we're planning. We go every other year from the humanities trip. What's different is Ms. Melzmann has usually taken the group, and I will be taking the group in the summer of 2017. We are going to Costa Rica. The dates have not been set yet. We just decided on the destination last... I had a parent meeting on Thursday night, and I had two itineraries, and they chose Costa Rica. We are traveling with an organization called Interact. I do have just a few booklets from Interact around the table. They are a Wisconsin-based company. They've been doing student trips for over 20 years. I've given each of you an itinerary, so you can see where we're going and what we're going to be doing when we're on the trip. The approximate cost is $2,500. This includes airfare, lodging, and meals. Out-of-pocket expenses would be souvenirs, additional food, overweight luggage. Travel insurance is not included, and then there are two optional excursions on two of the days. Some of the fundraising ideas that came up in the parent meeting were to sell concessions, selling services, parking at the fairgrounds for Shepherd Center, econo receipts, Cinco de Mayo dinner, picking grapes at the winery in Baltimore. So at this point, the group is not discussing going out and selling a product, you know, maybe selling tickets to a dinner, but at this point, we aren't looking at selling any products that would compete with any other groups. And I know concessions, you deal, you get on a rotation with the other groups, and econo receipts are, again, you just, people save them for you. Picking grapes at the winery, that's a rotation thing, too, with different service clubs. So I don't think we're going to be doing any fundraising that'll have a big impact, but I don't know what the triangle frame is for... I don't know if there's a place to ask questions either, or I could ask Tim, too. I'm not sure exactly how far in advance you want to know of fundraising information.
We work with Jake. He creates a list.
Okay.
It's really easy. We just don't like any competition with other groups.
Right.
And it doesn't look like these would be. And you're such an organized person, I'm not worried about you getting that to the board ahead of time. They'll approve a list in the fall.
Okay.
You can get that to Jake by then. That would be nice for them.
Okay.
But sometimes it happens where it has to come back as an additional thing later.
Okay.
But touch base with Jake.
Okay, okay. Just some miscellaneous information about supervision and safety. There is one chaperone per six students, and always one representative from Interact with the group. We are planning on having a three-day family stay, but during the family stay, all the families and the students have an emergency phone number, and we make sure that the families have phones that can get to this emergency number. But even during the family stay, we are together during the day, and then they go back to their families at the end of our, you know, about four or five o'clock when we've done our activity for the day. So I would see the students daily, even though they're in a family stay. The students commit to honoring the rooming list because we will be in hotels. Actually, we're in a Rainforest Lodge. How come is that? We're going to be in a Rainforest Lodge the other four days, our nights, and they do commit to honoring the rooming list. So again, that's a safety, that's a safety issue. You must be in the room that you were assigned to, and there can be no switching of rooms. And they do sign a code of conduct, you know, no alcohol, and no drugs, and no matter what your age. There is information about if there would be a travel alert on page two of the booklet. There's, you know, if the United States would issue a travel alert to Costa Rica, it talks about what kind of refunds the kids would get and things like that. But Costa Rica doesn't have an army, so they're not, they're not usually a place where there's much problems with safety. Talks about if you're interested, if you had questions about health insurance, that's on page six of the booklet. Medical cards don't work in another country. We would have to pay cash, and that's the chaperone's responsibility to have enough, and Interact's responsibility to carry the cash to pay for any medical emergencies, and then the parents agree to reimburse them when they come back. And then if they are interested in the cancellation policy, that's on page seven of the book. The kids can, I don't know it off the top of my head, but there's cancellation policies, you know, like so many months before each payment is due, and how much you would get back depending on whether you canceled. So again, I have had one parent meeting, and there was a really large turnout. So I'm excited, but I have not yet collected the first deposit, so I don't yet know what numbers I am looking at. But 50 kids attended the meeting. So maybe half would go out of that.
Have you, do you have a running number that usually were between 20 and 35, let's say?
Mrs. Melzmann took three kids the previous summer. Is that what you're asking me?
Three kids?
She took three kids the previous summer to Costa Rica.
How about two summers before that?
I think five.
But we're expecting a lot bigger turnout this year.
The meeting indicated there's going to be, but again, nobody had to put money down yet. But there were 50 kids in attendance, I counted.
I have a question. I know in...
Can I come back?
That last year, with Ms. Melzmann, the kids who did go actually stayed with some students from different schools. Would that happen this year, or?
Okay, there's two kids per family. There's always two kids per family. When you arrive in Costa Rica, you travel by a coach bus, and they want the coach bus full. I don't know what an average coach bus seats, maybe 50 kids. So if we don't have 50 from our own school, which I don't expect, we will be paired up with a school that'll make that bus as full as possible. So mostly kids will room with kids from Cannon Falls, but there could be one or two that are rooming with a kid from another school, and I won't know. But they don't want to travel with a half-full bus. That's not economically sound for them. So we'll be, we'll be matched with another school.
Lynn, when they talk about medical insurance, and they have to, they pay for it in cash over there, I mean, I don't know what the cost of medical insurance is over there, but is it, can you carry enough with you?
Well, I probably won't. The Interact will be responsible. They'd wire the money down there, would be my guess. I don't think they're expecting me to carry, you know, $10,000. But it does, you know, the, I, Interact will carry the costs, and I would imagine they will wire the money down there to cover anything that could happen, and then they would ask the parents to reimburse them when they get it back. And usually, you can use your, you can use your medical card, you just can't use it there. You can use it when you get back to cover expenses.
Any other questions for Lynn?
Any extra chaperones?
I've had that question asked a lot.
This is not one of the hard ones. You probably could trump somebody to double that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn.
Reports and communication. Matt, what do you have for the cause this evening?
Yes. So we haven't had a board meeting in a while, and some of these events happened earlier, but I want to give credit to these events that happened a little in the past, as well as the events that are going on right now. So the boys' and girls' basketball team wrapped up a great season. The boys ended a great season with a defeat to Caledonia, and the girls lost in a playoff game to Lourdes, but both did very well in the playoffs, and hopefully stronger next season. Ryan Epps won the state wrestling title in his, in his weight division. This makes four consecutive years that Cannon Falls has had a state champion in wrestling, something to be proud of there. And then FFA concluded a successful national FFA week, and then they had a farmer's share breakfast and dress-up week that was very successful, and they got students involved with that. The Cannon Falls speech team finished second at Owatonna this past Saturday. They, this weekend, they've, they finished up, the next weekend, they're going to finish up the regular season at North Field, and then the playoffs begin, if so to speak. The high school band and choir competed at large and small group contests, so neighboring schools in the area actually came into the auditorium. And there was two judges that were hired to listen and give some feedback to work on and move the choirs forward going into a large group solo ensemble that'll be happening two weeks from this upcoming Thursday here at the school, just to help them out and get those performers ready. The middle schoolers had their first semi-formal dance. My sister went and heard a lot of memories, and it sounded like it was really well-attended and a lot of great experiences all around. Spring sports sign-up was passed March 3, and so we're in the midst of making that transition from winter activities to spring sports. So you'll see a lot of more practices in the field house with baseball, softball, and hopefully getting outside soon and testing out those fields. The bomber baseball team concluded their bomber card sales this evening, so that caps off another successful raising money for them. And I'd like to take this time to congra, give my congratulations to Bjorn Pearson and Emma Tomley, very successful in the AAA award. They were recognized finalists from Section 1A, so we had representatives for both the male and the female award on that. So well done to them. And then the warp dance is Friday, March 18, in the high school gym from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m. The cost is $5 at lunch and $7 at the door. And then prom tickets will be going on sale soon, $42, and it's time to ask someone to prom and get ready for the big dance.
The speech tournament, the speech playoffs that you talk about?
Yes.
What type of format do you have to go with?
So how speech works is that it'll be North Field this upcoming Saturday. That'll end the regular season. And then what happens is we go to HBL, that's sort of our HBL all-conference opportunity. And if you get first, you have an opportunity to go up by the board, by the gymnasium, to be recognized as an all-conference champion if you win your respective category. So a lot of opportunities there. So then after that, we basically get a week off, and then we will host subsections here at the school. And if you are part of the top six recognized place, the top six, you move on to sections, and there's two subsections. There's one in Wabashaw, and there's one here in Cannon. And so basically, six from Cannon, six from Wabashaw, and then 12 meet up at sections, and then six will make it to finals at Byron, and then the top three go to state and represent the eight sections in Single A. And then there's also Double A for speech. So it's kind of complex, but the numbers add up.
All right. Thank you, man. Committees. Folks, have we had any committee meetings?
Curriculum meeting, Matt. February 22nd. We talked about the high school registration numbers and new ITV offerings. Is Tim here?
Nope.
Well, I know there were some things he was going to bring before the board about some registration numbers that were right below, like 11 students rather than 12, that they wanted to get through the board. So I'm sure that those wouldn't be a problem. And there's more there, I guess. One concern I have is that 15 kids were turned away from Spanish.
Well, not turned away yet. We've still got that worked out. ITV has become a really good asset for that, and I met with the WeTech people, and Kenny Monamingo actually has one section of Spanish to fill, and so kind of a perfect opportunity for them to keep a full-time teacher and for us to get some kids in there. So we're looking into it, and ultimately, no one's going to be turned away from Spanish. But they do have four years to take Spanish law, I think. We want to, if kids want Spanish, we want them to have that now.
Yeah.
Okay, facilities. Facilities met, and I know on the next page, we'll be, we discussed the curtains of the house.
Yeah, we got a lot of facility stuff on the agenda.
So, coming up.
Yeah.
Negotiations ongoing. Kurt, do you have anything?
Actually, WeTech, we're negotiating Aaron's contract right now. And we're going to do, I think, a three-year contract with Aaron this time around.
The superintendents will be doing the evaluation. We talked about who's taking what part at our last meeting, so that's under the same kind of policy you guys are doing for my evaluation. The policy will be very similar for Aaron, so makes it easy.
Administrative reports. Elementary school.
I'm going to pass his out. Pass this over. Make sure Nora gets one.
And I'll also say there's a foundation, there's a foundation meeting this week, and they're busy planning for their auction, which is April 23rd, so they might still accept donations if people... Pass the deadline.
They'll squeeze us in.
It's, you're past the deadline to get in the booklet, but we take donations all the way up to the day out. I've got my report here. I'll just pass it out. Obviously, a lot on the legislative session. There is so much going on, and I'm not going to read through all of it because it's actually a two-pager, which I normally don't do, you guys, but I will. All the updates are on there. We had a finance, a finance meeting today with Ellers. Really, really excited. The rates are at an all-time low. Everyone's taking advantage of that. We are looking at a couple opportunities for some possible refunding, just like refinancing your house. You know, we took out those bonds in 2006. We're kind of at the point where if we were to do it soon, we're at $1.2 million. But the way the market is looking, and we could even have more savings if we waited. So the recommendation is October, November, to start looking at some refunding options. Maybe not with the new bonds that are in place, obviously, but some of those older ones, believe it or not, we're already at 10 years, and it could, could have a possible savings of over $1 million. So it's a front of our taxpayers to make sure we get that back as much as we can. And then one last thing I have is the Cannon Community Center. You know, CCC is, is, the roof is the way it is, and we're definitely looking at some facility things, and Dave knows about all of that. But we really need people in that building. The more it's used, the better, you know, people are more observant and things like that. When the Shepherd Center moved over to their new location, it vacated their current area. And if you didn't hear, the School of Dance, a nonprofit organization, does not make any money, was hit by a big tree out at, what's the name of the nursery?
Spring Garden.
Thank you, Spring Garden. If you drive by, you can see it. The roof is in, and so they were without a home, and kind of called us panicking, you know, could we just use the gym for a little bit or something like that? Dave and I got in there, and she literally was hugging both of us. Dave, a little uncomfortable, but crying and really, really happy. They really feel appreciative. So I'm just letting you know, they are going to pay for a portion of the utilities, just like Shepherd Center, and it's a great relationship. But again, these are kids that are coming to our town and open enrolling here and finding things in our community to do. And the true meaning behind that community center, I think, is to bring in the community. So we think it's a perfect match. If anyone down the road has an issue with it or doesn't like the idea, let me know. We're just trying to get them set up there, putting in flooring, and they're paying for anything that needs to be upgraded. So, you know, we think it's a great partnership with Shepherd Center right there, them, and then this summer, we'll be running summer school down there. So it's just kind of a neat, a neat hub of activity for our community, so we're pretty excited about it. And the only other thing is, I'm going to kind of jump on the AAA thing with the two kids. So many people approached me. It was wonderful to go up there on Saturday, and people all over were saying, what is in the water at Cannon Falls? How did you get two candidates in the same region? I mean, it may never, ever happen again. So it was really neat to see them at halftime get their awards, and then to have the governor involved and things like that. It was pretty, pretty amazing, pretty proud moment, definitely for the school district. So if you follow me on Twitter, you saw all kinds of pictures of it, and, you know, pretty proud momma there. But I just wanted to comment on that, too, that it's, it was really neat. So there's my report. I'm going to get mine over to Nora, if you could, please. And that's all we have.
Thank you.
Jake, just two quick things. Matt touched on it, but I kind of wanted to point out the outstanding winter we had. Throughout the course, winter sports, void basketball, we had the course race, the championship. Girls' basketball had their most wins and their first playoff wins since 2008. Dance was fourth in state, and wrestling had a state champion. So very successful winter, and very exciting, especially February and March there. FFA holds their toy show this weekend, which isn't usually a big event, so if you go by on Sunday and see the field house back, that's what's going on. Preschool registration opened up today, so we're already planning for next year. And at Cannon Kids, we had a, we have a staff member on maternity leave. I just wanted to point out some of our employees have really stepped up and really filled that void. We didn't hire somebody to fill it. We just had, filled from within. Kim Houghton, Karina Otto, our two long-term Cannon Kids employees have really stepped up and done a lot of work for us. Our preschool teachers have done a great job filling voids and making things work. And then Candace Steele, another educational assistant we've had. We're only about two weeks into the maternity leave. We've got a couple weeks ago, but it's been very smooth down there despite having somebody else, and we didn't even fill the position. So very happy down there.
Jake, this year, you have a waiting list for preschool. Do you anticipate that next year? Is there, can we continue to work? I don't want kids on waiting lists even in preschool.
With our preschool registration, we're actually, every year, we tweak it a little bit to open as many spots as we possibly can. So we're doing our best. Usually at the beginning of the year, we've got a couple openings, and by the end of the year, we're pretty full. So it's those late registrations. But like I said, we tweaked a couple things again this year where we think we'll be able to open a couple extra spots every year or so, or this year again for about the second or third straight year. So hoping we can get all those kids in. So I did some numbers. We applied for a grant. I did some numbers, and I think we figure about 76% of our current kindergartners came to our preschool. So that, you know, but, you know, where are the rest of those kids going? You know, St. Paul's offers preschool, so we'd like to get that number in. So that's all I have.
Also, could we just, on Derek's report, you guys maybe deserves recognition, is it says the Cannon Falls Elementary students raised $13,196 for Hoops for Heart. So that's going to be donated to American Heart Association. Their goal was $11,000, so they exceeded by over $3,000. So I think that's...
The beacon is written on the story.
Okay.
Jake? Dave, anything for us now, or do you?
Ah, nah.
Concedos.
I got money coming up.
Okay, technology. Rob, you dealt with the WeTech. Anything, anything more that you're aware of?
No. When did we meet? There's a few weeks left to meet that. No, we'll be meeting again in April before we meet again. We'll meet about every other month.
Nothing other old business, but a new business as we begin here. Consideration to approve UNESCO project bids. Public forum. Little blurb on there that says anyone who wishes to speak to anything relating to school, facilities, procedures, can now have this opportunity. Anyone wish to speak? That's closed. See, we didn't need it. That's not true. I'd get in trouble. Jumping to the UNESCO project bids. Number one under new business. Beth?
Yeah, you know, we're just in the process, a lot of processes going on, and a lot of bidding going on, and a lot of time on Dave's part, meeting with contractors and things like that. If you pulled in the last time, we couldn't even find a parking spot. There were so many contractors here for those meetings as well. But we've asked UNESCO to come tonight to talk about the bidding process and kind of where we're at. We do have one situation I think you guys are going to address. So one contract that is still out there, and maybe we're going to talk about that. So maybe we'll turn it over to UNESCO, and then I know Dave has a really good handle on this as well. If that's okay with you?
Well, sequentially, does it matter, Dave? Would you like to speak first to anything?
Pretty much just to start it off, you know, we had our first round come and go of bids that have come in. It's not the completion of the bidding process. We actually have open bids going on as we speak right now. So, you know, you know, we had a good turnout, and things seem to have went well for the, kind of the first round, I guess I would say. You know, and, you know, what we're looking for is just to kind of complete that so we can move on to the other bids that we have coming in. So, but I think, I think the first rounds went very well, and I think everyone at UNESCO was pretty happy with, with the way this started out. So, I mean, with that, I can turn it over to them if you have any questions.
Let's, let's move forward. Dan?
Mike, speaking here.
Over here?
Yep.
My name's Dan Bush with UNESCO. I've been down here a couple times before, but through the design, working with Mike and Dave and the group, and lots of questions, lots of answers through that process. If there are any questions over here tonight to do is, Mike has forwarded a letter of recommendation for the bids and the contractors that responded on the elementary school, plus the doors and the windows as well, so that had been included, have been forwarded on.
Do you have a copy of the letter of recommendation with the bid tab?
I think we do somewhere.
Yeah. I did send it out.
So basically, we did two bid openings. We did one on March 3, which was the ventilation project, and then we did another one on March 7, which was the door and lock key project for both the elementary and the high school. So your letter of recommendation is our list of contractors that we would like to issue contracts to for the elementary ventilation project, the high school window replacement project, and then the elementary and high school door lock key project. When we did the opening for the ventilation project on March 3, we did not receive a mechanical bid for the high school. And what Dave was alluding to, to the open bidding process, is we are rebidding that on Thursday, the 17th.
Well, to uninitiated, which includes me, the bid process, all right, would you, would you qualify yourselves as general contractors in all of this? Would that be a... Not long. Go ahead.
There's actually two kind of general contractors, those that will receive the work and those that actually do the work, hire all the contractors themselves. We're more of a construction manager, program manager, that we don't self-perform the work, but we oversee the designs, the bidding, installation, the warranty, commission, phase-in.
When you, when you're part of that process, what does, what does the bidding process entail? I mean, does everyone get a fair shake on this? Do you just open it up?
Yeah, we start early, you know, during the design phase. We'll be calling contractors, letting them know their project is coming along, so it's not a surprise. And then we'll put an advertisement in the paper, let that cycle through for a couple of weeks, and we have a electronic plan redistribution or distribution center that all the plans and specs go up there on, and then send some invites out with the information on how to get that.
Are we, are we a part of that as a district, or do we just hand everything over to you and say, take care of this for us?
Primarily, a lot of it is the back and forth with Dave and his group on the designs, the what to do, what you want. You want a green wall or a red wall, those sorts of things. And when we get to the bidding process, Dave works with us, but we primarily take the heavy lifting on that to get the information issued.
So Dave's group was involved in the design process with our consultants in selecting equipment, as Dan had alluded to. They were present at the bid opening and involved in that process as well. And then the district actually contracts with each of the contractors. So this is what the letter of recommendation would be, is to issue the contracts to those particular contractors.
So what we do is write the contracts on your behalf, issue the contracts, and get those signed, and then oversee the field work as a whole interact.
And as far as the bid opening, when we have that time set, all the bids come in at a designated time and a deadline. They're all sealed envelopes, brought to the head of the opening. UNESCO opens them up, reads them all out loud. Contractors document what's been bid, and so everything's sealed until the time of the opening. So that's pretty much how it's handled, and a lot of times, some of them walk out before they're even done, you know? So it's just a matter of, you know, who's actually, you know, a lot of times, it's weird because you'll have a ton of people walking in, and, you know, maybe not a ton of envelopes that come in, or it's the other way around. Not a lot of people walking around, and you get a ton of envelopes coming in. So it's just luck of the economy on what happens and how many bids you get.
In a small town, we ran into... In a small town, we ran into this when we were doing our big project 10 years ago, eight years ago, is that people were always asking, do you have any locals that are going to bid on this? Or, you know, can locals handle a job like that? That was kind of a constant theme in town. Let's let our local people at least have that option of getting involved with that. So, you know, when, that's why all my questions on me. And once we get into the bid process, the specs are handled by you. You send the specs out and...
We also have a pre-bid walkthrough. And that walkthrough goes through detail, any questions they might have prior to putting the bid together. So, they can get their, you know, feet on the ground, in what they're bidding on. They can take measurements, they can, you know, whatever they feel they need to put an accurate bid together. So, we do have a pre-bid walkthrough for, for anyone that's interested in the work, local or not local.
And we do divide that up amongst the gen, the work packages. So, we had a general group and a mechanical group, electrical, windows. And then we take one member of our design team, that that was their, their area of responsibility to design. And they actually walk that group of contractors through the building. So, all the contractors bidding on like the electrical package were with the electrical engineer and they got to ask all the questions they wanted of the engineer and the design companies.
So, that was kind of a two or three hour pre-bid?
Yeah.
And sessions, phone calls, people return trips.
So, guys, do we have a, like, do we have to say we have to have at least two or three bids before we accept the bid? Or is there sometimes with only two bids come in and we take the best of the two? Or do we, is it better to see at least four or five bids come through? Or how does that work? Do we go by, how many bids are?
It'd be great to see that many bids for each trade. Unfortunately, with the bidding climate that's out there right now, we struggled. There was a couple that we got one bid on. And your bid tab, the bid tab was included in the recommendation. It lists all the bids, who the contractors were. And not getting a bid on the high school mechanical just showed that there's a lot of work out there. And it's a good economical time. It's great for, for the contractors, but not so good as trying to solicit contractors.
We did have a large group who all filled out a form on the pre-bid. It was a...
We had 38 contractors at the pre-bid.
A lot of interest in the...
And that's every trade.
And keep in mind too, that time has a lot to do with it too. It's not like you could just go out and just start rebidding everything. I mean, this project's got to start. So, you're also tied to the clock here, or the calendar, I should say.
Any other questions for them?
I just want to say how wonderful it's been working with you guys. I mean, it really kind of puts a lot of things that, in the district office for Dave and I especially, at ease that you are helping with a lot of those things. So, thank you. But very, very easy to work with.
Okay. Any other questions? I would entertain a motion to approve the UNESCO project bids. Motion by Kurt.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Laurie, can you note that Jerry abstained from that? Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay, the vote was 4-0 with Jerry abstention.
Thank you.
Good to hear.
Thank you. Consideration to approve the second reading of the throne policy. There's a lot to read there for the throne policy. Our first reading was about six weeks ago and now we'll do again. Rob?
I'm going to say I dropped the ball on this one in the last, since Laurie's been back. There was some discussion regarding the policy follows up. You don't have access to edit it. And I just looked real quick and we didn't make any changes. Part of the consent, one of them is mine. It's that par, like she kind of put in a tape that was good. On the permission request responsibility, it says persons may request permission to operate the UAV. We're thinking more stronger language where persons must request permission to operate the UAV. But this change hasn't been gone through the...
I would table this.
Yeah.
I think that's...
So, that's what I'm going to recommend that we...
We tried getting it. Deb and I didn't have access to it. So...
So, we still think there's a few, just small changes, but changes to be made. So, I'd like to table the second reading until we get that changed done.
We certainly can do that. We'll table it for an upcoming.
Yep.
I don't think we need, not a, not a motion to...
I'll make a motion to table it till the next board meeting.
We can. Who, Rob made it?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Discussion of a school resource officer for Cannon Falls and the Cannon Falls Police Department joint initiative. Although it's interesting that, you know, I've, I've thought about this. A friend of mine, now a retired sheriff's department employee, has been hounding me about this for years. It's, he thinks it's just a win-win for both the school district and the community. I was almost going to contact Beth saying, let's talk about this again, when that very day she contacted us. So, the terminology of liaison, which was a former title before?
It could be called anything you want. Just don't call it, you know, school arresting officer. Because that's not what the officer would be there for. School resource officer, school liaison officer, essentially it's going to be the same thing. It's a resource for the schools and it's a resource for our department. You know, much as the chair alluded to, it really is, you know, a win on both sides.
I think I just want to get a little bit of an update. I think you guys have seen this almost every year from me. I'm on my fifth year superintendent and I've brought it forward three times. It's certainly something, I agree with you, something we need. Both Chief McCormick and I have worked on grants for this area. And if we were Minneapolis, we would get a grant. Some of the big schools do get that. We did not qualify for the grant. So, what we've been working on more is kind of, well, first, who does it go to? Does it go to city council first and then come to us? Or should it come from here forward? We've made some general agreements that this would be a three-year commitment. I see where Chief is coming from. You, you can't hire someone and then say next year, this is something we don't want to do. We don't know if it's going to be a 50-50, 60-40, or 70-30 split. We don't know those things yet because he hasn't brought it forward to the council. What he's looking for us for tonight, and I guess I don't know where this board stands right now, is what do we want to give him a recommendation on moving forward on? Every school in the Goodyear County Ed District has an SRO. The, even the Goodyear County Ed District, Brenda's on that committee, they have one now as well. It's just, it can be difficult. We're, we're looking at 174-day only student days only. It's a position I'm sure a lot of officers would like because it's days. But the, the city would still be able to use this person on their, obviously in the summer when their activity is higher. We think it would be a really great relationship between the city and the school. And I know you've heard this plea kind of every year. I just think security-wise and a lot of other things, just to build that relationship with kids, it's just a really great idea. So, if you have specific questions or anything?
Yeah. So, as you look at the information I prepared for the superintendent, essentially what I did was because the school district and the city run in two different fiscal years. So, the city's already locked in their 2016 touching. So, I went to my police commission and said, superintendent's asked about this. Would this be something you'd be willing to do? Again, that's just a committee of the council. The council body would have to make that final decision, much like the elected officials here. And what they said was, we're interested in looking at it. We know if we did it, it would have a cost for our 16. And, you know, we'll figure out the details, but at this point, we're willing to consider that. But, we've got to do three years. And the primary reason for that is officers are very expensive to hire. It's not just getting them hired, it's training them. And we've got between the 12 and the 16, we've trained people that we've got to put them through. If we don't, we end up in liability of failing to train. And so, it doesn't matter if they've worked somewhere else, we still have to put them through the process. Our process isn't time-based, it's accomplishment-based. That's typically the, amount of time it takes to, to train a new officer. Then, so, if you look at it, I tried to break it down into district fiscal years. So, you'll see something for, the way you guys structure it. For me, I split it that way because we also have a different fiscal year. So, then I can take the 15 weeks or 17 weeks, whatever it is, and apply that into our fiscal year. And then the 22-week into the next fiscal year and vice versa. And just tried to give you a ballpark again. It's about the latitude. It might be something that we get a lot of interest in. The final cost would be determined by, you know, that officers, officers position within our great system. You know, it's a contractual agreement that the city has. So, we're, we'd be obligated within those parameters, much like, you know, contractual union employees here.
Did your board kind of allude to which percentage they were going to go with? I mean, did they hint at it?
They gave, they gave a wide range.
Okay.
I, I would be very surprised if it was all the way at the bottom. But, I think they're, they're all into...
All the way to bottom being 50-50?
50-50. You know, as long as there's a cost share component to it, they understand that it's not a year-round cost share. It's a, you know, essentially 36, 37 weeks, whatever that totals out to. And then there's some holidays in there. During those holidays, they would come back on our dime, so to speak. And, you know, we're, lots of details. As Beth knows, you know, the new cooperative district just went through their contract agreement for runway services. So, there's a lot of things that have to be worked out. But at this point, we're really looking to find out if there's interest at the board level to explore this and put more staff time in that direction.
Money aside, budget aside, what would you see a, a resource officer doing within the school confines during the typical day?
Sure. Well, I mean, that's one of the things that we're really sort of have to, you know, have a discussion on. But some of the roles that I see would be, you know, assisting the school in preventing delinquent behavior. Believe it or not, there's delinquent behavior outside of the school too. And we usually know when that's going on. But, you know, sometimes we see the behaviors out there before they get here. Or, I suspect vice versa. You see the behaviors here before we see it out there in the rest of the community. And so, you know, that would be one area. You know, just the opportunity to have that, that interaction. You know, right now, I've implemented a program, we're about our third year, where the officers can stop up, have lunch. If they want to eat, the school creates a, we have an account, they send me a bill, I pay it. And it gives the officers the time to interact. The elementary school, much more popular. Kids love when the officers come in. They all want the officers to sit with them. High school, little different environment. Not quite as anxious to have the officers sit down with them. But, over time, by having those officers just stop in and hang out, we actually created those opportunities for kids to come up and engage and to talk to the officers. Because not every time we're here is because something's wrong. And that was really the purpose behind doing that, was so that if the officer stopped into the school because they needed to drop off a form. And, you know, Sue Jones gets called to the office two minutes later. Everybody's saying, oh, Sue's in trouble, the cops are here. No, completely unrelated. And so, part of my, my desire to get the officers just interacting up here is to eliminate that. And I think we've reached that point. I don't think that the student body as a whole really gets any, any excitement out of the fact that there's a squad car out front anymore. It just is happening on a regular enough basis. Obviously, it'd be a resource to the teachers as well as admin. You know, we do some teaching or assisting the teachers with, with programs. The driver's edge program's going on. I think I've got an officer coming up for one of the health or social studies classes to talk about, you know, parts of what we do. And, you know, quite, quite candidly, law enforcement is taking a beating right now in the media. And we're going to be looking for some really good people that want to make a career out of law enforcement down the road. And the more interactions we can have with kids that are positive, and they can see what we do and learn about it, maybe we can get some applicants down the road, not for my department, for other departments, will be very good for whatever community they're serving.
When an, when an officer is in our facility and he would be under your jurisdiction as the chief, but does he, does he answer to our admins?
He would, he would work in cooperation. Obviously, I'm not going to relinquish, you know, my authority over them. I'll be candid with that. We've got policies and parameters that we've got to work within. We've got constitutional constraints that, you know, don't necessarily come into play for a district that we've got to follow. If we don't do our job right, the cases that we need to actually send forward for prosecution will be unprosecutable. But I would look at it as, you know, sort of a partner, very similar to, you know, best management team. You know, the principals run what they do, but they work as a team. And I would see the liaison as being very similar. You know, we work with social services, there's child protection teams, meetings that occur at the district. We would make sure that that officer is part of that. Right now, I'm attending him. But, that would be appropriate for that officer because he's interacting with those kids. And maybe he's got some, or she has some information to share that the other ones aren't aware of. And so, I really see it as, as more true that partnership as opposed to, you know, I'm the officer and I get to do whatever I want. For those of you that know me, that isn't going to fly in my department to begin with. I'm very focused and based on making sure that we're serving our community and doing it correctly and always doing the right thing. And, you know, being a partner here is much better than trying to be in charge.
Jeff, what kind of, when you look at what type of presence the officer would have, would it be similar professional attire like what you're wearing now in the school?
And really, that's pretty much open to you guys. You know, we do some, some security outside of, you know, our normal traditional thing for one of our businesses. They've asked us to be there, but they want us to be there in, you know, business casual. So that, you know, we, we don't stand out. And so, we accomplish that. Same thing here. There may be days where you want a uniform presence. But maybe there's other days where it'd be, you know, more casual, shirt and tie or, you know, bomber wear on Fridays. You know, I'd be kind of looking as we go through this process and we're sort of spell that out within those parameters so that, you know, I have a clear understanding of what your expectations are. Do you have a clear understanding of what the police department's expectations are? And then we can convey both of those to the officer that's assigned into that position.
One thing I know that Tim wanted to add on this, we, and I had a spreadsheet ready, I didn't bring it tonight, but we spend about $9,000 in comp hours for lunch. And Jen, maybe you can allude to this a little bit. What happens is people already have a supervision, but they'll give up their lunch period to supervise lunch because we have to have people in there. And that equals about $9,000 a year. To have one more person there, you're, you're eliminating that person paying them out. So, you know, when you see these numbers, just remember that there's about, you know, half of that, so 4,500 at least in savings just because you've got another person on staff that can be available. Someone else might be teaching and can't be in the lunchroom at that time. So, it, it would be nice to not always have to pull Jennifer or Tim or someone out to the lunchroom. Because I know you love lunch, but it would be a nice opportunity for admin to do admin things as well.
And again, you know, when Beth and I talked, we really talked at, you know, more of the 20,000 foot level. And, you know, conceptually where we both see these things. And, you know, if this is something that the board thinks they would like to explore in more detail, then certainly we're going to start there. And then we're just going to keep working our way down till the landing gear's out and we're, we're set to touch down to both elected bodies.
Yeah, I would also like to add on that my father was actually an SRO for the district of Pine Island for a number of years. And I remember going into his office and seeing just the gratefulness of posters by students. And he, he told me that it really breaks the barrier of communication where students can come up to these officers and say, okay, what's going on? And really just open it up. And I think that's a better environment for preventing issues like bowling and therefore, I think it's a great program.
And, you know, the, the three years is just the minimum. If you guys find value in it, we find value in it. We want to continue it, you want to continue it, we're continuing. And one of the things I would look at would be, how long do we leave that officer in that, that position? Would we look at getting down the road four years, five years, to see if there's somebody that is anxious to try that with their hand in it. And, you know, so, right now, I would expect whoever goes in it, if, if both bodies decide that you do that, they would be there for the three years. But, you know, I want to, I want to put that, that caveat out there that down the road, it may be something different. And I think that's beneficial for the officers as well. I know a lot of school officers that get in and love it and stay in. But, at the same time, they sort of hit a point where they're just not, you know, as driven as they were when they first got there. So, just something to think about.
So, the consideration here is the discussion to continue on with discussion, to see if the board is interested in moving forward.
Do you want me to continue to do that? For Chief and I to continue that? That's why it's just discussion. There's no...
I'm not looking for necessarily board action, just a board consensus. I'm not looking for necessarily board action, just a board consensus, that you're comfortable with the three-year components and you'd like to work into the details.
We won't be approving anything tonight, but if you want us to stop, you know, if this is a daydream for both of us, then, then we don't need to waste any more time on it.
I just think in the past, it wasn't that anybody was against it, I think it was financially important.
Financially, yes.
Right.
If men reserve.
I agree.
And as the superintendent alluded to, we've tried for grants in the past. I once again got notice today that the cops grant is opening and we will, as soon as the post up, we'll start the process again. Superintendent was correct. You know, Minnesota, you know, gives a, a finite number and it'll that over probably ninety-five percent to Minneapolis or St. Paul. And that is by congressional design. If you're a city over a certain population, you're pretty much guaranteed a percentage of those numbers. So that leaves, you know, anywhere from three to, to five for the rest of the state depending upon the grant cycle and what they've opened it up to. So we will continue to try to find funding, but maybe we haven't been successful at this point.
Who would not appear to be a voting item more of a consensus item? Would, would your consensus be to continue on with this conversation? Rob?
Yeah, um, I guess I would like to hear from the administration at all levels, Derek, Tim, Jen, and I guess even the city as far as. Because we're gonna take up a hundred and seventy-four days under the three hundred and sixty-five, correct?
Well, the two sixty is roughly like a full-time working person with weekends and everything else. So it's two hundred and sixty like my hundred glory. So yes, a hundred and seventy-four of them would be that, that's why.
The students are here.
Yeah, the students are here a hundred and seventy-four days, you know, and we could, we have a great working relationship. If there's a staff training and we want to hear when the teachers are here, obviously I call Jeff and say, hey, this Officer Jones needs to be at the school and, and we'll work that out.
And that's again, you know, it, it comes down to the actual cost. So if you want them instead of three seventy-one or three eight weeks.
Well, I'm just curious what the city's thoughts are as well, more of their perspective.
Well, that's why we kind of went back and forth on, is it the cart or the horse, who's first? And we kind of decided, if the school doesn't even want to move forward with it, why would he put it on the next agenda? So he'll be on that next Tuesday's agenda, um, kind of.
Actually, I won't be, but.
Oh, that's right, you're on vacation, that's right, I'm sorry.
We're being, we're being now moving into more of the, you know, again, we're at twenty thousand, we're bringing it down to ten, and then it'll likely end up back at our police commission. You know, the police commission has indicated their willingness to move forward with it. They didn't mind spending more staff time, as long as the district, you know, school board was on board with the three-year component of it. If that was a, a no deal for you, then it'd make absolutely no sense for, for additional staff time, for additional staff or the superintendent. Because for the city, that's just wouldn't, that was a loss.
I didn't look your way last time, how do you feel about this?
Oh, well, I'm on the Goodview board and we just voted at the last meeting to approve that for Goodview District. And all of the other members already have a resource officer. And everyone, there was no dissent on that, everyone voted in favor of that. And they were very pleased and saw that as a positive thing. I think they went with the sixty forty with the school paying sixty. And they had already, as of January, had already had forty-five calls, I think, to the, so I mean, it really is helpful to them. So I think I'd say that's a positive thing, so I'd be in favor of, of pursuing it.
Nora, did you have a question or statement?
Yeah, the rest of dating myself, is there still a dare component to this or does it even?
My understanding is the district moved away from dare probably, what, nine years ago?
It's been, at least that, even when I was elementary, we, we moved away from dare, a lot of schools have.
There's other programs, you know, right now, you guys are using, you know, real. And it's not, you know, that dare component, but it's, you know, teaching those life skills, responsibility and behavior components. And there's lots of programs out there, we certainly could look at it, that, if that's something of interest. Unfortunately, all those programs haven't added cost to them, you know.
And when you hear PBIS, that acronym, a lot of that is about positive behaviors and obviously we want the officer to be trained in that as well. It, it's a lot like a dare program in, in this sense. And then chemical health, mental health, all of those things are in the health classes, which again, this officer could be a part of, so.
I think it'd be good to know too what we're currently spending for the liaison officer, if you have any.
We don't have anybody.
We don't.
No, we're nothing.
This would be brand new. The last thing you had it was, probably about twelve years ago.
Just lunch.
Spend more there.
Thank you for your lunch.
It was, it was during the Clinton Ops Program, I remember.
It was before me.
To buy your own lunch.
Well, I think the consensus here is we'd like to continue conversation and move, move along with, I guess, the next phase of conversation, so.
Yep, I think that'll, it'll probably okay myself getting together with the superintendent. I'm sure she's been reviewing contracts, you know, my staff has been pulling in for me and I started to redo those. And then we kind of figuring out, the, the devil of the details will be cost share. What you're willing to do, what the city's willing to do, and of course, both of us, we don't really know how far each elected body's willing to go until they, until they get to front of them. And we'll figure out the order, you know, at that point. I expect that the superintendent will be keeping you guys informed, just like I'll be keeping our police commission. Our police commission is the, is the body within our charter that oversees the police department.
Here you go. Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, that was a discussion item, we'll move down to number four, discussion of a civil defense sign.
This one, I may actually turn it into an action item, if it's okay with the group, but we'll see where it goes. If, if you remember this guy, Dave Davison, there is an old fallout shelter in basement sign. And if you have driven by the, or the stone house and that area is, this is what the sign looked like. We've had some vandalism on the corner. This is a really neat sign, if you go online, they're very expensive. To get a fallout shelter sign, it's very valuable. And we could tell that people were continuing to pick at it and pick at it. They put lights on it to try to protect it, and then when I say they, I'm talking about the Cannon Falls Historical Society. I had been contacted several times and then the people stopped trying to get it off the wall. It got to the point where someone over the weekend had tried, two weekends ago, two weekends ago? Had tried to really, really remove it and they called me kind of in a panic and said, we'd like to take this sign down, we want to preserve it. And I said, absolutely, go ahead, you can do that. With that said, the kind of, the conversation kind of went along a little farther with Steve Dabolo. They would like to have the sign donated to the Cannon Falls Historical Society. You know, they're going to preserve it for us, they'll keep it under our name if we want them to, but ultimately, at the end of the day, what would we ever do with that? It's maintaining their records. I just think it shows, I think it's a nice gesture to donate this to the Cannon Falls Museum. They're looking at growing, they're looking at maybe even getting a downtown business, you know, a, a different space to put the museum and things like that. So they're very interested in if the board would be willing to donate the fallout shelter sign. You know, it, it has no real value for us, I don't know where we would store it and keep it. So, um, long story short, I guess I'm just asking for that. If the discussion is no, they are more than willing to hold on to it. But there's a process every year you need to go through to make sure that you, you know, we are still the true owners of it. So my recommendation is to donate this, I'll take any questions.
Do we have approval from the historical society to remove that?
No, it's our sign.
It's our sign.
This is ours.
Historical building, right?
Pasterity.
Yep, no, it, this is fine to be removed.
You're sure?
I'm a hundred percent sure. Yeah, that's why.
Historical building and all that works.
Exactly, and that's why.
No issues at all?
No issues, no, okay, yeah. We, um, we double-checked on it because that's why we couldn't take it down the minute we saw the vandalism or take it down right away. And everyone was like, no, you can't take this down, it's gotta be officially, it, it was quite the process.
I'll make a motion to donate the sign to the Cannon Falls Historical Society.
Museum. Museum.
Museum.
I'll second it.
And Brenda won that second. Motion by Kurt seconded by Brenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. More discussion?
Stop.
More than discussion, what's the value? What are you looking at value on that, by the way?
Why don't you Google it?
Well, you said you did.
Anti-grocho. I did, I found like eight hundred and fifty dollars, nine hundred and fifty dollars, I mean, it's, they're valuable.
Slightly damaged.
Slightly damaged, from the corner, it's like.
Used.
There's an AC.
But we have a picture of Dave Davison with it, so maybe it's worth more, I don't know.
Sorry, Rob, I jumped the gun.
I was just waiting for that, I just wanted to find out more about that.
Pass those over to Nora, maybe she wants to keep those.
I'm good then.
You have those ten thousand?
Yeah, I kinda jumped them, yeah. I thought we were gonna put new ones on.
Fallout shelter signs.
No, we have enough, we should show some of that science, come on.
Okay, we have a motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Discussion on facilities equipment.
Let's take.
Yes. Well, as you all know, we previously all approved the purchase of a new skid loader to help with snow removal. And, um, kind of some weird things happened. Number one, it never came in. Uh, I think we ordered it nine months ago and it still didn't work. So with the last big snowfall that we had, I got ahold of Nieber Tractor and I let him know the loaner they had given us, which was nice. I mean, it'll get the job done, but it was an old loaner. I just said it wasn't cutting it, we, we need something bigger and better. And then they sent something bigger and better. And, uh.
No.
And, uh, I was so happy that the old skid loader didn't show up. So with that being said, that's what I've been using for the rest of the, uh, the rest of the winter. And there's some significant changes in how you can operate with having a piece of equipment like this. And what it is, is, is basically an articulating tractor instead of a skid loader. To be honest with you, it's actually less horsepower than what the skid loader would have been. But its function is far more valuable for what we need to get done. The use was phenomenal, the time saving was phenomenal, awesome piece of equipment. I had, uh, Nieber Tractor also get in touch with Josh Davison about the financing on it. And we're able to work it out on virtually the same exact agreement we had with the skid loader, simply extending it one year. Same exact amount, added one year to get this piece of equipment.
So is it extending or?
Uh, no, it's just a regular bucket, no extending arm. Regular bucket, but you can use it for forks, bucket, everything you could use on a skid loader. Benefits are bigger tires, better for driving on grass or ball fields, things like that. There's just quite a bit more benefits to having it and the most important one is speed. Clearing, clearing the parking lot before school starts was the biggest factor.
So it's kind of like a little payloader?
Yeah, a, a, a compact mini payloader is exactly what it is, yes. And so we did some comparative shopping, we got ahold of, uh, Frontier egg right in town here. They brought a tractor out so we could compare it and compare the prices. And they were head to head right with what Nieber was, but Nieber's willing to work with us on the financing and Frontier's not like that, they won't do that. So, uh, that's the equipment that we have, I think that's gonna benefit us. I wanna continue to do the savings that we've been doing, I mean, we're.
It's remarkable, I mean, we had projected a savings of twenty thousand dollars on snow removal. Well, one, we had a great winter. And two, just the sand, the salt and the time, I mean, our bills, it, it almost closed to forty thousand dollars we saved. And that's after purchasing this equipment. You know, we had an eighty thousand dollar snow removal budget and we didn't come close to spending half that. So, um, nice winter helped.
Yeah, but, you know, the thing is, is I still think we would have a, a, a significant savings. We do everything in-house now. We do, we buy our sand in bulk, I buy, you know, tons at a time, we put it in a tent, we do everything. There's no extra calls and the most important thing is, is we're able to maintain and keep up through an entire storm or an entire day. The benefits, I could just go on and on about, it's, you know, I'm very confident that we're gonna continue to have these savings. And it was a blessing not to get that skid loader, I know it sounds funny, but it really was. I would never have realized the, the speed and efficiency of this compared to a, a skid loader that I've driven thousands of times. It really worked slick. I mean, I know Beth, you saw me out there and Josh Davison saw me out there and, uh, it, it was unbelievable the time that it saved us. It was really, really amazing.
Can you get in there as much with, with those as a skid loader, just to get in the smaller, tighter areas and how do you do the sidewalks, that sort of thing?
We have other equipment for the sidewalks, um, but what's really nice about articulating is, yes, you can get in there that tight because the whole machine articulates. So the other great benefit is you're sitting up on this thing. So your vision, you can back up within six inches of a wall. If anyone's familiar with the skid loader, you can't see a thing behind you. This thing, you're on top of everything, the vision is phenomenal. It was just really impressive to see how, how you could maneuver and how, and how fast it was and how nice it worked for this property. It worked really, really slick. And, uh, I would like to be able to continue doing it with that equipment.
So it's actually a year cost?
Um, Josh needs to give you those numbers. It was the identical cost of the two years, same exact amount one more year. I, Josh has to give you those numbers.
I can email those to you tomorrow.
Yeah. So it's a third more.
Look, with the cost savings from this year and then down the road, and we're even looking at maybe doing lawn care differently, um, the savings just continue for.
Right.
Doing things in helps, perhaps.
But it's still a third more than the skid loader way back period.
Exactly, yeah. Which I was actually surprised, I thought it'd be quite a bit more. The bigger equipment you buy, the bigger the state gives you a discount on that equipment. I believe we're up to a twelve percent discount for the state, um, helping us out.
You wanna continue on to this as a discussion item or would you, you wanna make this a voting item? We've got, we've got both options on the table here. You know, um, you know, in order to do what we wanted to do with our facilities, the equipment was needed and, uh. Boy, this would seem like the time, if we can, if we can keep going with the same budgeted amount, but just extended one year, we've got a very valuable piece of equipment long term.
Absolutely.
So.
So the power on this thing is just as good as a skid loader with the bucket, the hydraulics, all that to, to load and all that?
Hydraulics, load wise, it actually is, can lift more. And, uh, power, the way it's geared, because it's a front-end loader and they're not skid loader tires, they're big tires. It's amazing what that thing can push. It doesn't stop.
So I guess I'll let, thanks to question, is there something else out there that would work possibly even better than what you have? They just brought this up, we just happen to use it and you fell in love with it. Should we look at what else? And I'm not looking to spend more money, I'm just.
Well, yeah, that's what, that's what you're going to do, is you're gonna spend quite a bit more money. The only reason this, that put on the table wasn't because I loved it, was because of, once we got the official hard numbers on it. It was very, very much, I thought, within something we could budget for. If, if, if they wanted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this equipment, we wouldn't be having this discussion. I was very, I, it was a win-win for me, uh, getting the new skid loader that was already approved. So I was fine either way. And, uh, I think everybody was surprised when the official numbers came in on how much it actually was. That's the reason we're discussing it now. And yes, I do love it.
And I think you, to go on your question, I think you're thinking, is there something even more appropriate out there than this one?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm saying.
Got all the frontier.
Should we reevaluate the equipment and before we decide to go forward with this, go, let's go back and look at all the equipment that's out there? And we can't test drive it right now because there's no, no to push, but should we reevaluate? And originally, you thought skid loader was the way to go.
Well.
This is the way to go.
No, skid loader's still, no, that's not what I'm saying, no. Skid loader's great, skid loader will get the job done. Is this far more efficient and, um, does it work a little bit nicer? Yeah, you bet it does.
Right.
Um, but that's why we had discussions with, uh, Nieber, but then we didn't take his word for it. We went to Frontier, we asked their recommendation, they brought out their own piece of equipment, it wasn't identical to what we have here. So I did talk to a couple of different vendors on what the recommendation would be. They came out, they looked at the parking lot, the size of what we're trying to clear, realizing how many people we have do it, which is two. And, uh, you know, thi- this is what they both recommended, this would be ideal. Like I said, the skid loader, uh, if that price was a ridiculous price, we wouldn't even be having the conversation. The skid loader would have been a win also, I would have loved it. So it's not just that I like it, it's that it's a good price, it's a good value. And since I did have the opportunity to drive it, I'm really impressed with its function. It's a good piece of equipment for the money.
We're not focused so, solely on snow and we use something like this, so why are we?
We use it daily for loading semis, uh, water shipment came in for Wendy the other day. We have forks on it, we have buckets on it, we bring, um, lime out to the ball fields, you name it. So the other benefit is being able to drive the thing on the grass. Uh, we're gonna load up retaining wall rock later this summer, this is the equipment that we use. This equipment gets used, uh, all year round, without a doubt.
Dave, how about the purpose of digging with it? Do we have anything where we're in the, I mean, in the school, in the district where you have to use it for digging and landscaping, anything like that?
Um, you know, just like you could with a skid loader, a, a minimal, it's not a backhoe, you're not gonna dig trenches or holes. But it has a bucket, you can get a bucket with teeth, you can do landscaping with it, yeah, absolutely. The beautiful thing about it is you have a lot more vision than what you have, because you're so high up and you see everything below you. But it, it has the same functions, you can do everything you could do in a skid loader. You can do everything you could do in a skid loader in this thing.
Do we need an answer today? I guess I'd just like note the numbers are going to be.
We can do that.
Just bring it up for the next meeting. It's not good to send a contract to purchase right away, right?
We, you know, the recommendation is coming from the facility committee to move on this, but it doesn't mean it has to be tonight.
No. There's other factors we need to be careful of too because if we don't take this, then that skid loader will be gone. So we gotta be smart about how long we take on it.
I think we could have an answer by the 28th though.
Oh yeah, I, I actually expected Josh to be here, so I'm sorry.
You'll, you'll, we'll email the, um, the numbers on to you tomorrow, right away.
Okay, moving down to item six, discussion of the field house curtains.
That's me, man. We had a discussion at the facilities committee, which Jerry alluded to earlier. The discussion was, what do we do with the field house curtains? It came up again because Bucky has his clinics and all the things that are going on, wanted the curtains out. They've been tied up and cabled and locked since last year. The reason that they are, just to refresh everyone's memory, is the tracks became out of line and the turnbuckles that hold the chains together started falling. It was a hazard, it was dangerous, someone was going to get hurt, we tied it up. We also got the recommendation of the manufacturer that said, you better tie it up before someone gets hurt. So that's what we did. We looked at repairs to be able to get it done. I had two different companies come out and look at it. You're looking at about a $20,000 repair to get those curtains operating properly again. But then after that discussion, we realized, how often do we use them? We're finding out that really, to be honest with you, we don't use them that often. Usually it's about this time of year for Bucky's clinic. Conversation with Bucky's, yeah, it's great if you have them up, but if you don't, that's fine, it's not a big deal. Where we need the netting is on the very ends by the garage door and by the wrestling mat. Those nets are always out right now. The other benefit is, is you can also have full vision with your cameras in case there's a situation. With the nets out, you lose all that. What happens is, is people pull them out on the weekends when they're out, you can't see anything if something happens, pointless to even have security in there. The end nets always stay out. That's what they use for throwing baseball and it stops it from hitting the walls. And when people are walking, you know, as they go around that corner, they're protected. So what we thought of is it would be really nice is to be able to have the same type of curtains that separate the courts that are automatic, that roll down, to have those on the ends. Keep using those ends and eliminate the rest of the curtains because of the expense.
Just clarify where the shower curtain, curtains are.
The curtains are basically a, like you said, almost like a giant shower curtain. They're on plastic, plastic bearings, they're not metal or steel. And you basically just pull it along the track and then you pull it back and what's happened is, is as you pull it, because it's 40 feet in the air, you start yanking on it and yanking on it and then you start losing all your bearings and your plastic wheels and then everything starts to bend and it's just, they're, they're huge. They're, they're, anyone that needs to put them out needs to know exactly what they're doing to preserve it.
Are you looking at removing them? Remind me in the meeting, I was there.
We are looking to remove them. We looked at the cost.
To, we're not talking about a cost tonight, except labor, obviously with your team, getting those out of there.
Well, I'm still trying to finalize the cost of actually putting automatic curtains that roll up. That seemed to have worked virtually flawlessly for what, nine years now? We're looking at doing the same thing on the ends. I don't have those numbers yet, but I'm, I guess what we're looking for in this discussion is, is everyone okay with not having those curtains? Further discussion will be the expense that would come with, you know, I don't want to continue to put the time and effort into pricing out, coming up with another idea if everyone here says, no, we gotta have those curtains. So I'm just kind of getting the feelers out there on, how does everybody feel and how would you like me to proceed? Like I said, after discussion, we kind of found out, we, it's been a year and no one even asked for them until Bucky asked for them.
It ends up being about, what do we figure, six hours, three different sessions, two hour sessions that they used them a year?
Yeah, yep.
These are the ones in between the courts?
No, no, the outside ones.
It's the outside ones.
You see outside ones, not the ones in between the courts because then we can separate the fire and you still can see with your cameras.
Right.
And those weren't flawlessly.
Yeah, and they go up and down, those are the curtains that he's talking about, they go up and down.
The ones in between the courts.
Yep. The ones on the very end are the ones that we, he's looking for to get pricing on to go up and down as well.
Kurt, you have it?
Well, I, all I know is that, one, I, I don't think we've ever utilized them the way they're supposed to be used. And Jake, you can, whenever there's practices and stuff going on there, when people are running around the track, there's never any separation, which I don't think we're using those ones on the ends the way they should be. I, I think it's supposed, they're supposed to be utilized to separate the games, the practices going on and to protect the people that are walking around the track and it's never been done. Unfortunately, we have a, a cost issue now to, to fix them. And I don't know if you can make them, you know, like I said, plastic bearings or rollers versus steel, I don't know, but I think there's a, there's a purpose for them. I just don't think we've ever used them the way they should have been used, you know?
I know that we, you know, we have used them in a lot of cases when I just popped in here, when we initially had a facility starting up, those nets were going all the time and we had archery class in there and, and that was the design to, as you say, a safety buffer for our community when they're walking versus a, a PE class. What happened to that fall down? I mean, don't we have classes in there where we, we have stuff we need to dodge on the interior and we've got people that could get injured on the exterior?
Well, I think the last year has kind of shown that that really isn't as much of an issue as what we think. There hasn't been any complaints coming in. Walkers haven't, we have walkers every single day here, we have gym class every single day. It just simply hasn't been an issue. And you know, if it was something that they were in and they were working and functioning, fine, we'd leave them. But now that we're talking about a $20,000 repair, well, now we gotta take a serious look at it and say, is it something that was just nice or do we really need to spend the money for safety? I would say no. There, I, I haven't received a single complaint of someone, you know, afraid out there.
I don't think it's a point of being afraid, I just think it's, it's, it's a point of when you're running around the track or walking around the track and people, balls are running through and across the track and people are, you know, and, and then basketball players will, they'll line up and they'll line up onto the track or something and, and so there, there's this, all this disruption when people are walking or running. You know, in fact, I, I stopped running there because of the distractions. It's just sometimes very difficult to, to do that because it's, people are drowning out in front of you, there's kids and you're weaving it in and out and it's just, it's not conducive, but you know, it, it's a cost and, and I, I worry, does the cost outweigh that part?
And that's where, at facilities, it's almost exactly what we said is, you know, as soon as you need $20,000, this isn't money well spent in any way, so.
You know, and not to mention the extra stuff that happens on it. I got photos I can bring in.
We have a little seven-year-old that had climbed all the way to the top, all darn near the top.
Darn near. I mean, there, there, there are swinging ropes. It'd be one thing if they were put out and they were used for exactly what you're saying. That simply doesn't happen, especially on weekends when they're out. They're jumping, swinging, running, moving them, they're always on top. I mean, they just become a jungle gym and my concern after the photos I got and I showed Beth, someone's going to get seriously hurt on these things. I mean, it was, it was serious. He was up 25 feet with kids below him, shaking him to try and make him fall off of it. That's when I chained him up. I was done right there. I chained him up and I put a padlock on him.
It's safer to take them up than spend the money late midnight?
It is.
And you're saying we really don't use them regardless, so just remove them?
If those drop-down nets though, the ones that separate the courts and the ones on the end, if those weren't there, we'd have, we'd have to fix them. They use those every day for gym.
Right.
Those are an absolute must, must have.
Just the outside shoulder.
Just remove them or remove them and put in drop-downs?
But you're proposing, yeah, putting a drop-down, so if you get to know the cost of that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we do any of that tonight.
No, that, that, we don't even have numbers finalized on, but the discussion for me to continue to go on to get those numbers, to finalize it, to put a scope of work together. If we're going to spend money, I'd rather not spend $20,000 on something that we're number one, I don't think we're really going to use, number two is a hazard. You know, I'd rather put the money towards something that's going to be functional that we're going to use on a regular basis.
Kerry. You've been on all these meetings. You following this track, that thought?
Yep. My opinion is it would be a waste of money for the district to spend $20,000 for the repair. I think if we repair what we currently have, the damage is going to happen again. And I think at times it's going to be, it's, becomes more of a hazard to have them and have the jungle gym with kids climbing on them. We're worried about them falling and having to maybe dodge a ball around the track, that's my opinion on it. I just think it's, would be a waste of cost to spend the $20,000 in the cost to fix them.
Why don't we just remove them now and then see if we need? We could always replace them with the raised-up ones in a year.
Yeah, if, if they're not going to get, if we decide we're not going to repair them, they're going to get rem, yeah.
We'll pull them, take them down so they're not a hazard at all anywhere, just, nope.
No, no, we could do that. I mean, something we could do ourselves, I really, yeah, absolutely.
Assess after that, maybe in a year, people are saying, hey, we need something to, then we buy something later.
And then like, like Dave was talking about, you know, Bucky's really the only one that has even mentioned it. He uses during clinic and he's got three or four sessions.
Three, three.
Three of two hours.
Yeah.
So essentially they can use six hours a year.
Is there something?
On a Sunday.
They could get that.
And it's not even all of them, it's only really one session, to be honest with you. You know, and I just think that we decided to bring this just so everyone as a group realizes why they're not repaired right now and why, you know, we need to discuss if we need to move forward or just leave them as is for right now.
And going back to you, Bob, the intent when it was built is to leave full of those curtains down, drop the ends and then the community using the outside track during the school day without kids or interference, but it just hasn't been the case.
So.
Actually getting away, you know, and you can't fully move them all, so if there's a basketball game going on, you know, they're covering part of the court, so you gotta obstruct a view of the court even too. Like Kurt said, if they work properly, they'd be great to have, but there's not enough space, so like you said, the kids are lining up on the track, so if the curtains are down, they're pushing the curtain into the track anyway, so there's just, yeah, they're just don't get used enough right now to justify it.
So our, our direction today would be what this evening? Not take them down?
Not to invest.
Not to invest.
Take them.
Remove when, maybe this summer when the rest of the links tore out, they can take them down.
Well, we just thought at the, at the facilities meeting, just as important as it coming to you with something we need, we thought it was just as important to come to you and say, we're opting to not spend money on something. I thought it was important.
All right, I guess I.
Makes sense.
I'll make a motion to remove the outside curtains in the field house.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Rob for the removal of the outside net. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Item seven, consideration to approve a retirement request.
Yeah, we have a long, long time teacher, Roxanne Soder. And many of you remember her as a third grade teacher, some of you remember as a special, you're shaking your head, did you have her in third grade at all? No, you probably remember back in the elementary. Anyway, she has just served our district in so many different capacities and just an absolute compassionate, caring teacher and she's just, she kind of waited a little bit and she really doesn't like the idea of not coming to work every day to teach, but she knows that this is the right time and I see a lot of volunteering and things like that in her future, so it would be my recommendation to accept her retirement request and hopefully we still see her around school a lot because she's really attributed a ton to her school.
Regrets, I'm sure.
I'll make a motion to approve and thanks to Roxanne for many years of service.
I'll second, Brenda, seconded by Kurt, thank you. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Number eight, consideration to post and hire a 1.0 FTE special ed teacher for 16, 17.
Yeah, this is obviously to replace Roxanne's position. The caseloads are actually at some of their highest that they've been in a while and I met with Sherri Johnson and Sharon Noble and we all agreed that there is no reduction in this area. We absolutely need to get this posted as soon as we can because I'll be real honest, finding special education teachers is, is not that easy, so it would be my recommendation to move forward with this as well.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry. Second?
I'll say.
By Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve the spring assistant coaches.
Give them a chance. Yes, we do.
I have a question.
Sure.
On the trap shooting? I, I think it's a great thing and I think it's a great thing that they have this many coaches, but how many of these coaches are paid coaches?
None of them.
None of you.
Even better.
Cherry.
Oh, there are any volunteers that volunteer? I had a volunteer this year. New JV softball, Dan Davidson, that's a change from last year. Junior high softball, anticipating having an eighth grade team and a seventh grade team. In past years, we've only had a mixed team, so last year those two coaches shared, split the salary. This year I think we'll have to pay both of them. Two, one new name on the, a volunteer baseball guy, Carter Conback's a volunteer this year. There is not a C squad coach listed in past years there was, which is not paid by the district anyways. Boys, or excuse me, girls track, they actually flipped. Nell Swanning last year was the extra assistant and Natalie Sampson was the junior high coach. They actually flipped this year, Nell Swanning was the junior high coach. Oh, excuse me, go back to baseball. Kevin Landry is a seventh grade coach. He's, he was here a couple of years ago, he came back this year. And then on the boys track, junior high is Melissa Yousa. And then, and then a junior high boys, or junior high golf coach is in it as well. He's a brand new teacher over there. And a couple of these are going to be, you know, if we don't have the numbers, we won't pay them. There's a couple levels there I've got some concerns about, so if we don't have the level, we obviously won't pay the coach.
And again, we've talked about this several times, but whether you're paid or not, you go through exactly the same procedures.
Correct, yep, everybody's got to do the background check. They have all been approved already, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the spring assistant coaches.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve the 16, 18 food service contract.
I'm going to test this out. I'm sure Lori gets one over there, Anna, thank you. You know, I've been working a lot on negotiations. I've got secretaries and our EAs that'll be coming to you next round. Food service, you know, it's kind of standard.
Um, food service, um, you know, it's kind of standard. They really did not ask for much. Um, the big thing is longevity and we thought that, um, under the circumstances, we get people that are, it's called serve safe or safe serve, what is it, Laurie? Serve, okay. Um, they get certified and we wanna keep those people. We don't wanna continually be training people, um, to work in the kitchen. Um, so you'll see that we did add some longevity. Um, at ten years, they get twenty cents more an hour. And fifteen years, um, we get forty cents. We only have one person in that category. But it really is important that someone that's just starting isn't making the same as someone that's been here, um, and has all that training at fifteen years. So, um, you can see the, um, amounts there, uh, three percent, three percent is, is where I've been trying to keep all the groups. They came in quite a bit higher, but there was some other, uh, other things that they, they wanted, um, i- in future contracts, we'll have to look at. Uh, we do struggle to find people to work in the kitchen. And so we, we may not, um, get another contract like this, but for the next two years, we'll have this. We also added in a benefit change of free meals. And I know that sounds silly, but a lot of times there's food left over, uh, that we can't send home with anyone, we can't give it away, we can't do any of those things. So at the end of the day, if they want a free meal and it saves them three dollars a day, I'm, I'm happy to do that. So, um, that's, that's where we're at on that.
Questions? I'll make a motion to approve. Motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion?
What did the, I guess currently, what's the gross number that it changed? Is it all good in percent? Is it a dollar amount?
Yes, it changed it, um, seventeen, over two years was seventeen thousand dollars. So three percent was total at thirteen, seventeen thousand. And I could, you know what, I'll add that to the list and email out to you, Rob. It's a great, great.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Against? Kerry. Number eleven, superintendent contract.
Kurt. Okay. Um, I just got this pointed out, I got it for you guys. Um, when we talk about negotiations.
Okay, keep going.
Talk about negotiations, we're still in the process of negotiating with the principals, but, um, it wasn't too hard. We, we got together with, uh, Superintendent Baptiste here and, and we came up with a, uh, a deal that seemed to work good for all of us. And if you look at it here, um, it may sound a little skewed. It says the increase is gonna be eleven percent for this upcoming year. And the reason being for that is we've had the ability for Beth to kind of take less than what she might be worth in the district here and in the HBL. She is, um, she's been at the lowest part in the HBL for all salaries. And she's actually one of the oldest ones in that position. The attrition rate is.
The oldest, thank you, thank you Kurt, you're the oldest.
But I think there's only one Kurt, most tenured.
Or senior maybe.
Yes, most senior. Um, so that being said, we thought it was time to bring her up to par. And that's where the eleven percent comes in. Um, included in that is gonna be for the next two years after, it'd be one point nine percent in year two of an increase and then another one point nine percent in year three. As for some of the other things looking at, we did increase her 403B, that's what we'd like to offer. It's 403B from what is present, we get fifteen hundred dollars per year to three thousand dollars per year. And we, uh, looking at increasing her, uh, vacation days from twenty days, which is present now to twenty-five days. As for the language, there was one language change and that is that, um, uh, for the next, in the contract, it says that these, uh, that the superintendent, if they were choose to retire, um, anywhere just from fifty-five years on to sixty-five years, that the school district had paid for their health insurance. We are going to eliminate that, so that, should Beth leave, um, the contract that comes out for the next superintendent, we no longer have that in there, trying to reduce some of the OPEB funding that we have out there because that's where our OPEB, OPEB money comes from, or where, that's where it goes to. So that's kind of it in, in a nutshell. She did a great job with her, we shared a great, uh, evaluation. Um, things look good there. Um, and right now at this time, that's what the negotiation committee is recommending to the rest of the board.
Kerry, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I, I just think that we really got a bargain, uh, when she came in as interim superintendent. And she's never asked for any big increases in, in wage. Um, I think she's, uh, has suited the district and served the district for a while. And I, as well as Kurt and Bob, felt that it was time to bring her up to where she belongs with the upper end of the superintendents for her longevity and their commitment to Canute Falls.
Historically, she's not even on the upper end here. Um, I will bring some more historical data in here because when we, uh, when Mr. Sesker left, his, uh, his, um, wage was in the one fifteen area and I will say that it's within a couple of grand of that. We brought in Beth with no experience as a superintendent and, um, her starting pay was at ninety-five, which made her absolutely last in the HBL, probably absolutely last in all of southeast Minnesota. It was a time for us to, she was officially entitled, uh, or titled as an interim. So during that time, we've seen her growth, but we haven't seen her, um, pay commensurate with that growth. Nobody said a word when we, uh, we cut twenty thousand dollars out of our budget to, uh, short shrift her in a way, I guess. Uh, but now it's time to, uh, bring that back up. I absolutely know that other superintendents get, when they go for their negotiations, it's kind of like, what's the average superintendent making? And when we've got one down here, they can do nothing but complain about that. Beth, what's wrong with your school district? And so, uh, we, we need to get her on par with other supes and this is exactly what that contract does. Doesn't bring her up to the top run for absolute share, but I think we all felt that, uh, you know, in good conscience, we needed to do that as well. So, um, Bison has done a remarkably good job and, uh, and, and keep us on task on this, by the way. It's never a, never a fun thing to be the negotiator, but you got it this time, so. Questions? Okay, if not, I would look for a motion to approve the soup contract.
I'll make a motion to accept the soup superintendent contract.
And this is a three year contract?
That's great.
Correct. Okay, do, second?
I'll say.
Jerry, second?
I can.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Kerry. Congratulations, Beth.
Just want to say thank you very much. I really like working here. Thank you.
Okay, informational items. We see what's on tap for our next regular board meeting. Consideration to approve budget, revised budget, our, uh, handbook, conversation, mosquito update, negotiated contracts. Again, if we have anything more for the cause, just report in to Laurie or Beth and we'll see what you can do about getting it on. Anything else for the cause?
Jake, can you send me the revised, uh, I can use handbook? Thank you.
If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Further discussion? All in favor of adjourned say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.